Pardon me, I'm going to call a meeting to order. If you would all like to rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis has just got a few words for us.
Well, welcome, everybody. It's great to see a packed house, and we have some awards to get to momentarily. I do just want to acknowledge, you know, on my way in to the meeting today, I had the news on, and I don't know if all of you have heard or have not heard, but another terrible tragedy involving an elementary school in Texas, a school shooting with grades two through four, with 14 children reported dead. So just very sad, very sad situation, and our thoughts and prayers are with those families impacted by this just senseless violence that seems to continue. And I don't want to start the meeting on a negative note, but I do want to acknowledge it. It's a reminder of how important the safety and security of our students and our staff are on a daily basis. And just ask you to think of those people impacted as the facts come out. Very limited reports still out there, but certainly a terrible tragedy. Again, sorry to start the meeting that way because we have some wonderful things to celebrate, but did not want to at least not give that a few moments I thought it deserved.
Okay. Thank you for that. And now, in a very rough segue, we're going to move on to recognitions, but...
I think what we should do first, let's go Cabe Leadership with Simsbury High School students.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
All right, so we'll give this to Katrina up here, too.
Yes, please.
All right.
Come to the microphone so that everybody can hear you and all the wonderful things you're about to say.
The Cabe Leadership Awards are very special to us. It is actually Boards of Ed, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, who each year put out a promotional idea, and this year's idea, I don't want to get it right, is to encourage them, and it is based on leadership abilities within our school. So this year, we're quite proud to have two members for this award. Alani Rivera, who has been not only an exceptional student, but she's a member of our SHS and District Equity Council, co-president of the Students of Color Alliance, and a member of our Leadership of Success, where she mentors students needing extra help on a regular basis. Congratulations, Alani. Award winner here is Keenan Wilson. Keenan is our Student Council President. He is a three-sport varsity captain. He is the treasure of the National Honor Society and is a mentor in the TOPPS soccer program. So we are thrilled to announce Keenan Wilson.
So, Alani and Keenan, if you would step up, I have some certificates to give you.
Thank you. Truism, service, and personal power, and all your hard work. Congratulations. And it's a very wonderful honor. So if you two would say anything, they'd love to.
Hey, where are you compared?
All right, now for the middle school.
Yes.
All right, we are exceptionally proud of our two students that we'll be recognizing on the same criteria, but we put something out to all of the teachers that they've had in the past, and even students become part of our nominating process at the middle school as well. Our first nominee is Fiona Gallo. And at the middle school, we have a theme this year. We started the whole year with treat people with kindness. And I think there's no better ambassador for kindness at Henry James than Fiona. She's just done a wonderful job. She's a star student. There are a lot of really strong students at Henry James and at Simsbury High School, but Fiona's not content to just be strong by herself. She's always seen helping her peers and giving, you know, that extra little bit of help to her classmates. In addition to that, she's writing her own novel. She's also a poet and is really committed to dance. So congratulations, Fiona. Our next award winner is Jonah Leepar. And at Henry James, we have this, I tell all the sixth graders are so excited when we bring them into the school about this whole concept that if we don't have the club, we'll create one. And many students hear that and it goes in one ear or the other. But for Jonah, it went in both ears because he helped create two brand new clubs this year and last year at Henry James. First being the Witness Stones Project he's creating with Mr. Hammison, where we are recognizing a former enslaved person who lived in Simsbury. There's going to be a whole ceremony in a week or so, I believe, at the first church where they're planting a stone to commemorate and recognize this person. And then he also started an environmental club with Mr. Kirk, and we have planted a pollinator garden in our backyard and are really working hard. He's even, I believe, testified down at the state capitol on behalf of the environment. Congratulations.
Anyone want to come up? Okay.
Mr. Penny with the scowder up.
Mr. Penny.
Good evening, everyone. Every year, CAS, CIAC announces to each school, there will be a recite of the most outstanding academic and athletic accomplishments of two students from every school. This past Sunday at the AquaTurf, we were able to honor two of our very accomplished student athletes from Simsbury High School. First, Olivia Burney, who earned a 4.772 GPA, suffered a major injury last year as a junior and worked her tail off rehabbing and getting ready to come back this year. Earned not only all-conference, but all-state and all-New England honors this year as a runner, set two school records, I believe, this year. Congratulations.
That's fantastic.
Just an outstanding young woman, represents the best of academics and athletics at Simsbury High School. Olivia, congratulations. Keenan Wilson, who you heard a moment ago, earned, on top of being a three-sport captain, was all-conference in soccer this year, earned a 4.474 GPA as well, so outstanding academically in the classroom as well. And one of my favorite things about watching Keenan play, besides getting to hang out with his parents, was his attitude and his effort on and off the court in the classroom are really unparalleled in his senior class. He's just an amazing student athlete. He puts the team first, he works hard in everything he does. And if you watch him on the basketball court, or lacrosse field, or the soccer field, he really is just working as hard or harder than everybody else out there. It's just an honor to present Keenan Wilson with the scowder up.
Congratulations to you both. Well done.
Outstanding.
Mr. Katrina, do you have student reps to introduce to us?
So, no, it's on this one.
I'd like to see you there.
And I was thrilled to have this Selena join me this year. We go through what is really an arduous process to me to pick our student reps that do such a fine job representing not only Simsbury High School, but all the other schools up here to give, to let this student voice. And this year's process was not easy, lots of highly qualified people, but I am thrilled to announce that Phil Young ladies, Grace Meyer, Emily Kerr, come on up and stand up and get introduced.
Yes, Alex, yep.
So we look forward to your efforts and your contributions to the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing you next fall. All right. Is that everybody, I think?
That is, yes.
That's everyone? Okay. So now, we're going to move on to public audience. So anybody who would like to speak. For Simsbury Community Media, would you like them to come to the table?
That's what we...
Right? Okay. So if you would like to speak, if you could come to the table so the microphone would pick you up, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
I guess I'm a volunteer.
Have you been volunteering?
My name is Lindsay T. Kaz, and I live at 17 Lawton Drive in Simsbury. Good evening. I'm here as a Latimer Lane parent, speaking tonight to address many parents' concerns related to class size, specifically as it relates to the rising third grade. I understand current projections fall just under the district's guidelines of maximum capacity, but I'm interested to hear what other factors have been taken into consideration when making this decision. I've heard from my child, other students, and personally witnessed as a room parent that there have been significant number of behavioral disruptions this year. The district has acknowledged this in the latest publication of the Communicator stating, quote, "Increased needs for intervention and mental health support for our students were evident," and, quote, "The transition back to classroom learning has not been an easy shift for all students, especially our youngest learners." Furthermore, the Communicator noted that, quote, "The schools have received increased requests for guidance on how to best handle the anxiety and stress experienced by their children." These statements by the public school speak exactly to what we are concerned about. Adding five or more students to an already challenging classroom will benefit no one and in fact be a detriment to many attentive, willing learners. While the pandemic cannot be used to continually excuse these children, it's all they've known in terms of their education. This is a first, quote-unquote, "pandemic" class, and they've yet to experience an uninterrupted year of school and are about to face a renovation on top of it. Removing support at this critical time will only serve to perpetuate the problem, not solve it. I urge you to reconsider this decision."
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hello. I'm Lori Boyko. I live at 15 Oakhurst Road in Simsbury, and I have written and rewritten what I wanted to say tonight because I stick to my time limit better that way. But tonight, I just can't have anything stick, so I've decided to go off script. I feel like I'm living in the Twilight Zone. I feel like the emperor has no clothes, and nobody wants to say it. I've been coming to Board of Ed meetings since last August, and there is no shortage of controversial topics to be discussed that are of concern specifically in our schools. I've mentioned a number of them. I know there are others. I feel like I talk more than anybody on the board at all. Maybe there are conversations going on outside of the Board of Ed meetings that we as parents and the community are not aware of. I know I've had some one-on-one conversations, so I am appreciative of the attention of the Board of Ed, and I believe that the members of the Board of Ed care tremendously. But I feel like when I come to these Board of Ed meetings, we have these wonderful presentations by the school administration, but no real Board of Ed discussion short of what parents' common voice as concerns. So I'm just wondering, are any of these issues going to get addressed? Are they going to get addressed publicly, discussed publicly? I'm not even saying I know what the outcome is, but I'm not hearing any public conversation. Susan and I, as I mentioned at the last meeting, have had a good conversation, as I've had with some other individual Board of Ed members. But maybe I'm just missing the protocol. Is there some other place or time that the Board of Education discusses school issues or makes decisions on school matters? I've had wonderful conversations with Matt. Sue has an open door, but my schedule is so full, I feel like my entire full-time job has been taken over trying to take care of what my son is learning in school. We've been in this school system since my oldest was in kindergarten. He's now 24. I've never experienced anything like this. In seventh grade, my now freshman was asked by his PE and health teacher in a get-to-know-you session whether he was gay, straight, or bi. Why does his PE teacher need to know this? I did have a good conversation with Principal Baker at the time, who acknowledged that his daughter was still interested in My Little Ponies. But I thought it was a one-off, a teacher trying to be relevant and contemporary, but these themes have continued, and I see it in the curriculum, I see it what's in the library. My son's French teacher in the fall was teaching non-binary pronouns in a language where masculine and feminine is critical to the language. The Academy Franses and the country of France don't recognize non-binary pronouns. So why is that being taught? He spent an entire week learning about all of the different genders that there are, but he had to stay after for math class to catch up on math that the students are behind in from COVID. So nothing is making sense to me, and what I really can't make sense of is that I believe in all of you. You are my neighbors. You are our friends. You have done a wonderful job educating my children, so I have a really hard time believing that you are all not seeing this too, but it's not being discussed. So when does that happen? Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight?
I don't want to speak, but I will because I'm totally unprepared. My daughter's in the second grade.
Could you state your name and address?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Tim Schofield, 22 Castlewood Road, Wheaton. So I'm totally unprepared. So currently, my daughter's in the second grade, going to the third. I'm going to talk about the condensing of the four classes to three. I think currently, there's 18 kids per class. They're to condense it down to three, which, as it stands, as I said in our student-teacher conference, apparently there's a lack of control, which I can't wrap my head around because I'm a product of the 70s in Catholic education. So there were different means. But I can tell you that my daughter, who loves to learn, who loves this place, who loves you, okay, doesn't want to, doesn't have, she lost that spark. She lost that spark midway through the year, where she loved to learn, she loved to come to school, and she cried to me one day on the way to school because there's no control, because there's, it's just too much. There's kids that act out, lash out, disrupt the class. So my question is, and I know you can't reciprocate, is do you really think that bringing 18 to 24 is going to be the solution for my daughter to have a better education? I don't, and there's no control. And I understand that your hands are tied to some extent with some children, but condensing these classes down, there's got to be an alternative. There's got to be some way to dilute this problem, or these problems, so the other kids that want to learn are not affected. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, I am Katie Tim. I live at 12 Westboro Drive. So like many other parents you've heard today, I have a student who's a second grader going into third grade. I also have a sixth grader here who has absolutely loved every single day she has spent here, as has my son. But I am extremely concerned, and I have had a conversation with Mr. Sullivan and to some very small extent Jeff. But, so I am extremely concerned for a couple reasons. So I understand that the guidelines are allowing us to potentially have three sections next year, but I do want to encourage that this group remember that guidelines are guidelines. They are intended to be an indication of what could potentially be a best practice in an ordinary situation. And I do feel, as you've heard from other parents, that this is not an ordinary situation. I feel that this class has first been disrupted by COVID. So I say it's by COVID. I am by no means a professional. I'm not probably the one to be judging this situation, but I am going to tell you that I do see the difference in terms of where the class is at between where my daughter was when she and her class were entering third grade and where my son and his peers are now entering third grade. I will also say that this is a unique class in a lot of ways. I've talked to teachers, parents, students. I have seen the kids crying after school. They said, you know, "I had to get pulled aside during class today. They put us on the rug, you know, and the teacher put us in a circle, and she told us that we were safe. It was okay, we were safe here," while others were off dealing with some behavioral, I mean heroically, dealing with very difficult behaviors in the classroom. So I do, I don't want that to get lost in the bigger picture of the guidelines, right, and of what might be happening at Squadron, because I do understand that Squadron has some significantly big numbers, too, in their classrooms. But I'm not, you know, I don't understand, nor do I pretend to understand the dynamics that exist at Squadron. So I will say, though, that in my conversations with teachers, they have shared that this is as a whole, one of the most difficult grades that they have encountered. Who knows if it's because of COVID, because of some social, emotional development, maybe that didn't happen in the ordinary way that it would have happened had they spent, you know, a regular kindergarten year in school and then a regular first grade year in school. It's just a different, different situation, different group of kids. I actually spent the day today at Field Day outside here with all the kids, and it was, you could see how different it was. I mean, these are some challenging kids, and sadly, they've never had Field Day, just like they've never had a million other things that normal kids have had, right, in going into third grade. So what I am just encouraging all of you to remember is that we as parents, we're here because we feel very strongly about this. I will say, my daughter in sixth grade, they moved from three classes last year to two classes this year. I had zero concerns with that. It's a large class. I mean, those are big kids in sixth grade, right? There's, and I don't know how many, Mike, you probably know off the top of your head, how many of those kids are in a single sixth-grade classroom, but there's not a lot of extra space for any of them in there. I had no concerns with that class. So I hope that that helps you all put it in perspective when I'm kind of comparing what could be a difficult situation, but wasn't, right, just on its face because of numbers, versus what we're dealing with here. This is just a different dynamic and a really challenging bunch of students. Great, great, great kids, but it's taken some true heroics, I would say, on the part of Mr. Lizetti and all of our teachers in second grade to even help the kids get to the point that they're at now. So I really appreciate everybody's time and thoughtfulness, and I just hope that everybody considers some of these things that are really more intangible when we're thinking about how to apply the guidelines towards next year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
I'm also not prepared, but I will say a few words. Hi, my name is Allison Violet, and I live at 60 Simsbury Manor Drive here in Wheaton. Some of you may know me as Allison Roper. I actually attended this school as a child, and I purposely moved back here with my children when I got divorced a couple of years ago. I am here as a parent who has a child that has required that help this year, and I cannot tell you the countless hours I have spent with his teacher, the school psychologist, you know, Mike, over the last year and a half has been wonderful, and my son has disrupted the classroom, and my son has needed that help. And I cannot imagine what a teacher would have to go through if you had another one of my children, another one of my son in your class with now 25 other kids. And I understand, just as my fellow parents have said, that there are guidelines here. I remember having, you know, 24, 25 kids in my class when I was in third grade here. It wasn't a problem. I was a child with a plan. I was a child who saw the school psychologist. We didn't talk about it back then. I was ashamed that I had a plan, that I was going to the principal's office, that I needed that intervention. I'm so proud of where we are as a society, that my son can openly say, and we can have these conversations with our teachers and our children and our peers, of this understanding that not everyone is on the same level and some people do need help. My main concern is not only for my children, but it's for our teachers. They already do so much for us, and I can't even imagine what it would be like for that man or woman to have my son, one or two other kids who require that much extra attention on top of learning. And I just wanted to speak as one of those parents of understanding that, yes, it is my son. My son disrupts the classroom. He can't help it, and we're trying so hard to work on that, and he's come so far. I can't, like, my child would not look you in the eye last May when he came in here from remote learning. Like, I worked with Mike. We had him home. He had asthma. I wasn't sure if I could send him to school with a mask, without a mask. I was scared, you know? Is my son going to die if he gets COVID? Is he going to die if he wears a mask? I don't know. I kept him home. I saw him change and deteriorate and become this angry, you know, child I didn't recognize from being home. I brought him back in. Mike helped me so much in May of last year, bring him back in. That last five weeks of school changed him. But coming back was still so hard. And Deb Driscoll, I mean, just an angel. She was with him last year, was with him this year, every week, sometimes every day. I'm getting an email, I'm getting a phone call, "We're working together." And she did that for my son. I don't know if she had to do that for anybody else. I can't imagine what her workload would be like, but I just wanted to say that the work that Deb has done this year with my son, yes, he has problems, yes, he still disrupts, but he's so much better. He's earned two Gotcha tickets. He's, you know, becoming more the child I remember he was before COVID and before we were sent home. And I just want to make sure that the reason that he is where he is is because his teacher could take that time with him. And this time, this brain development, everything we have here at this age is so crucial. And as all my fellow parents have said, I am just concerned about taking that year and putting that pressure not only on our teachers and our children and causing more of a problem moving forward. So again, thank you for your time, but I just wanted to make sure that you heard from both sides, too. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jacqueline Carlson. I live at 70 Simsbury Manor Drive. I just want to kind of mirror the same concerns. I have a rising third grader who has been in this class, that's kind of had all these same challenges throughout COVID, the very first year she's in school, and has been disrupted ever since, but she's thrived and done really well. And hasn't faced a lot of the same academic or behavioral challenges that I've seen a lot of my friends' children struggle with, and I credit that to the amazing teachers at this school. Like, I used to be a teacher. I know how great these teachers are. And to see them get more kids in their classroom and make that job even harder after three years of just nonstop challenges. To me, I think we also need to really keep our great teachers in mind and kind of the weight that's being put on their shoulders. My daughter's doing great, and I do have concerns about more kids being added to the classroom and maybe making that harder for her to get the attention that she needs. But in terms of teachers and being a former teacher, I worry for them and what a larger class size would be like for them. So I just, I know we're all on the same page. We want the same stuff. The administration, the teachers, the Board of Ed, we're in it together. But I did just want to say, please keep the teachers in mind, too, when you're making these decisions in terms of the guidelines, that larger class sizes are an even bigger burden on them as well as the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, David Humphries, 78 Simsbury Manor Drive. I want to echo a lot of the things that have been said so far. I have a rising third grader, and I really guess, rather than repeating everything, have two really distinct questions. One is, why is the second grade group being chosen to be reduced as opposed to others? Are they particularly smaller groups of classes, or what that situation is? Second would be, as I've understood it, they're going to be placed into a media center with a new wall. Not knowing the dimensions of those rooms or anything, it feels like that's going to be a smaller environment with all the disruptions that we've already heard about, putting more kids into a smaller space than a normal classroom. Seems like they're going to exacerbate the problems even more, so I'm hoping someone could address that specific point. Thank you.
Is there anyone?
Jason, do you want to talk about the size of the room?
Sure. I can address the second question.
Sure. I can address the second question regarding the library space. That library was formerly two full classrooms. What we're doing is putting a wall literally back into the same footprint that the wall that was previously there. It's the same dimension as the other classrooms.
Is there anybody else who wanted to speak in public audience? Otherwise, there's a couple of things I think we, I'd like to address.
I just ask a question about, just bouncing off what you just said. When the room was used as classroom back in the days, was it the same class size? You know, when it was used in the eighties as a media center as two rooms, like you're stating that you've done in the past, were the class sizes ever above 2022?
I don't have the data for class size.
I don't think.
It'll be two rooms that are the same size, same footprint as the rooms that the kids are currently in now, 27 by 27.
Right, the building was all built at the same time, so those rooms are going to be the same size as every other classroom.
I mean, we've ebbed and flowed over the years with average, average class size. I mean, 14 years ago, Latimer was 600-plus students with a lot of 24s and 25s.
Right.
And, you know, elementary has declined since then and is kind of back
On the upswing.
On the upswing. So.
I think, I think what I want to say is, the Board of Ed adopted classroom guidelines. It is not Latimer-specific. It is district-wide. That K2 is up to 22 kids in a classroom. And then district-wide, three, grades three and above, it jumps up to give us the flexibility to go to 25. We do our budgets with that in mind. But that said, as you all point out, they are guidelines. We monitor the situation. The summer is always move-ins, move-outs. We're balancing and rebalancing and that number is checked throughout. You are not the only school who's bumping up against these guidelines. There's two other schools that have class sizes that are similarly challenged. And these are things that we're just, we have to monitor as we go because we, we have to be mindful of what the Board of Finance and the referendum voters voted for our budget. But we will certainly, if we need to make a change, we've done it before. We did it at Central School last year. So certainly, we will keep an eye on the class sizes and we will do what's best for the kids. We understand our teachers are heroes and our administrators every day and we support their work. So we are not looking to make it harder for anybody. And so we certainly, Mr. Sullivan closely watches the numbers and we will, we have made pivots before in the summer. So I just.
I think that was the point of all of the speeches that were made tonight is that it's about so much more than just those numbers. So as, as everybody has spoken tonight, I think the numbers were brought up briefly. However, I think that the majority of the people that spoke emphasized the fact that those are guidelines and that we are in a new situation. And I think that's more of what we're looking for.
Right. And we acknowledge that because we are district-wide and we are in a challenging situation at the other schools as well. So we are, we are going to certainly do our best and just keep a close eye on it. And we ask that you give us the time to see how things settle out. I, we can't make a promise right now to you that we would make a change. That's just not something we can do.
Can I ask you, Chuck, if you look at the schools that, like, separate the elementary school and see in this grade which school has more IEPs or 504 plans or who sees the schools they call just or something like that to, to make up of the children?
So I can tell you, the biggest advocate for this right now is sitting over here. So, you know, we do have those conversations. They're important, they're important conversations. And we are taking time to pull that all together as a district. And while we're in what we call our hiring season, that's a time, too, we can obtain some actual flexibility in budgeting. We call it realized savings, right? If a retired teacher goes out and you hire a new teacher. So all that gets looked at kind of in its totality. But I think what Susan's, I don't want to speak for you, but I mean, we're hearing the concerns. Mike has shared some information. I've asked for some achievement data. So we're, we're talking on a weekly basis to, to try to move forward and plan thoughtfully and make the best decisions we can. But we, we do need a little time to do it.
Right. Your concerns are not falling on deaf ears.
Everybody knows that, we want to put a couple of that. The number alone is not the trigger. That's our problem. The number should be the trigger.
And, and I could say that the Board has made decisions before in, in similar situations that there's been certain needs that we felt had to, had to be met and we find a way to, to meet those needs. So we'll certainly have those conversations. All right.
I'm sorry. Do you have the meetings to do for, for third grade classrooms here? Do you have the space?
Yes. Here you're talking about, yeah.
In this building, yeah.
It's tight, but yes. Very tight.
Sit in a classroom right now.
And then to Ms. Boyko's point, conversations certainly are had. Not every conversation is had at the board level. Many of the points you bring up are discussed in committee, in our committee structure. And your points do not fall on deaf ears. We certainly discuss and we certainly are looking at everything you've brought up. And we are talking with administration and, and I don't want people to think that they come here and we do nothing just because it's not a public conversation, because it depends on the point you're bringing up and what we're discussing, what we're going to talk about publicly. But I do assure any of you who come with your public audience and you make your statements, while we don't generally get into a back and forth, much like I'm doing tonight and kind of breaking all my own rules, while we don't generally do this, we certainly take in what you say and we talk about it and we try to find solutions. And Lori, you know, we do reach out if we have questions or if we need more information. So I don't want it out there that we are simply listening and disregarding. That is not the case. All right. With that.
One more question. When can we make the determination whether it's three classes?
I don't have, I don't have an exact date for you.
There's, there's going to be so much flex, so many.
Will we be able to announce?
Oh, yeah. You will certainly be notified. I, when do you announce your classes, Mike?
First week of August. If I can jump in for one sec. Thank you, every, I'm sure you all came to see my presentation later. I'm sure that's really why you're all here. And just, you saw a microphone and wanted to speak into it. We, we send out classlets. All the classlets go out in August. With that said, we delayed kindergarten last year into the second week of August because we as well added an extra section here because of the, the rising needs. Actually, we've added four sections during the summer in the eight years that I've been at Latimer. So we, you know, to, to speak to that, you know, constant conversations throughout the, the year, the summer, rather, with Mr. Curtis and Mr. Sullivan. And sometimes the numbers settle in one direction and sometimes they settle in another. But it's a, it's a, a constant look throughout the entire summer.
All right. So with that, we're going to move on to committee reports and board communications. So, Brian, I'm picking you.
Thank you. Nothing odd from my committees tonight.
Okay, thanks. Done.
Nothing.
Jeff?
Nothing.
I'm just reversing order all the way around. Jeff. Lynn?
Yeah, just briefly. Today, I just got a summary of, as many of you know, that I also, I talk about what's going on at the legislative session, the session ended and what's going on in the Capitol. And these are just a summary of the major acts that were just passed recently, this past session. I did not have a chance to speak in them at the last meeting. But these are the highlights for K-12 education public acts, the Asian-American, Pacific Islander Studies requirement. You may have been reading a lot about that. So beginning with 25, year 25, 26.
The graduating class of 25, 26?
Yes, yes, thank you. Beginning with 25, 26 school year, the new law requires that the local and regional school boards include the AAIP studies in their social studies curriculum. The next one is childcare and early childhood grants. And this is a new law that expands existing and creates new grants for the various childcare and early childhood programs and services. So among other things, it creates a grant program for year 23 for the early children, children, childhood program operated in childcare services. So I'm speaking overall of what was passed, that the recent legislation this passed here that takes place in the years that I've talked about. And this is not only for Sims Republic schools, but for all the districts within, within the state. And the other one, which, which Jason probably can talk more about, is the indoor air quality in public schools. So as you know, in the wake of COVID-19 pandemic, the legislature had passed several initiatives to improve the schools' indoor air quality. We've talked a lot about this at, at board meetings with, with upcoming renovations, what have you. So that is another one. And the, the final, final one is the penalty for school construction grant projects failing to meet minority business enterprise set aside goal. And there's a lot more involved in that. So these are just the four that just came across, across.
In this last session?
Yes, recently, that just came out today. So I wanted to share them with, with my fellow colleagues as, as all the other boards of educations are also sharing them. And that's where we are. The other thing is that also came forward is, and I've mentioned this before with my colleagues, is about the edsite, which is on the government portal, edsite portal. We've had a lot of conversation about this. I know Sue's talked about this and Matt talked about this. And so anyway, I highly encourage you to, if you get a chance to get on it this summer, to take a look at this. And, and so this is open to anyone and any of you in the public that is, that are interested. This is a data warehouse and reporting portal. It's a great dashboard and it compares districts to the state. We talk about metrics and, and trends, accountability indicators, and, and some really great interactive reports. So, so if you have some time available and are interested to know what's going on around the state in terms of public education, I highly recommend that you take, take a look at this portal just to, to glance and see what's going on with the great things that is happening in public education in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you. Thank you. Olivia?
Okay, so starting off, at Simsbury High School, the art show began today and will be operating through Thursday. The induction ceremony for the National Art Honor Society will be embedded in the show tomorrow at 6:30. Alex Pico actually has a senior exhibit on display with the pieces that he presented to you about two weeks ago. So feel free to join us at the gym and see it in person. There are also many other fun events coming up at SHS, including capstone presentations, which begin today. Parents and guardians are invited to see the presentations and can watch their students speak about their topic that they've been working so hard for. The choral review will take place this Thursday with many of our senior singers performing solos. And lastly, June 3, next Friday, will be senior prom. So very exciting stuff happening at the high school. At Henry James, they have announced that they will be holding eighth grade day at Boulder Ridge on June 7, so coming up soon. At Squadron Line, they finished their Random Acts of Kindness celebration last week. So it was wonderful to see the amount of gratitude and kind messages spread among students and staff. Also, students made many cards for the Cards of Hope project to bring joy to those in need of some smiles. At Terrifield, they hosted their third annual Empty Bowls event last Friday. This event raises funds and awareness for hunger and food insecurity. Each parent or student that attended received one of the 150 handmade functional bowls created by Terrifield students. And lastly, at Tootin Hills, the annual duck race is being held in a couple of days, it's being held this Friday. And we can't wait to welcome parents, guardians, and students to this fun event. And it's a very fun event. So.
Yes, for anyone who doesn't know, by the Flower Bridge.
The, I forgot to call out, there was, I don't know if you guys went, there was the spring spree this week, I think, at Simsbury High School that was a, was done by the class of 20, 25, I think, more like a field day.
It was like a field day. Did you guys go to?
I couldn't go, but yeah, I was on the half.
Did you go, Alex?
I heard it was great and I just wanted to throw it out there, the positives, you know, I heard a lot of positive things and good school community and that there were a lot of students there. And I thought that was a cool thing, just wanted to shout out. And I can't recall, do you know who the teacher is? There was a, Mr. B. Mr. B.
Mr. Burdum.
Yes.
I heard it was really good food and it was really fun.
Yes, that's great. So I just wanted to call it out.
A little field day for those who might not have had one.
Correct. Right. Nice.
Right?
Sorry.
All set, thanks.
Jason, we're going to hear from you in a bit, yes? Okay.
Sue.
Olivia touched on a couple, but Matt and I had the opportunity to go and observe some capstone presentations today, which were just outstanding. To see the capstone class come to fruition and kids really take on some amazing projects from start to finish. We observed two students who put together a scholarship benefit concert in memory of Eric Dolan, which was just incredible. And all of the planning and the executive functioning needed to organize these events was just really, really impressive. So I want to congratulate our students and also our capstone coordinator, Liz McKee. Job extremely well done.
How do the students feel about the capstones when they're done with it?
We heard some sighs of relief. Peers were high-fiving. One of the aspects that I appreciated most, and, and I'm sure Matt will chime in here, was the start-to-finish reflection on students. Like, before they start, they have to do a self-reflection on the vision of the graduate competencies. And one student in particular said, oh, self-directed learner, like, it's pretty great when I have a teacher tell me what to do and I'll go and do that. But to actually self-start and initiate was more of a challenge and could really reflect upon his own growth specifically in that area. So I think it's a huge sense of accomplishment, not just for the project or product itself, but the skills that are really grown and fostered along the way.
It's good. It's nice to hear.
So that self-reflection, is that part of the presentation?
Absolutely, it is. At the end.
That's great.
It's nice to hear that kids are getting out of it what you hope they will and it's not just something else they have to do. So that's, that's great to hear.
And something that they're passionate about.
Yeah.
So that was really fantastic.
This may be a little premature, but any kind of lessons learned so far for next year? Not that I have a rising junior or anything.
I think we're, part of this, that both peers and.
Asking for the group.
Both peers and teachers provided feedback to the students into the overall process. So Liz is very much going to pull all of that feedback together, call it, and, you know, have the next iteration be even better. But this is all around passing good practice to those, you know, coming up behind. And I'm really excited to see what students do in this next round of capstone. It's really cool.
Were they, I probably should know this, but was everybody a junior? Or did you have some seniors?
No, every, there may have, I don't want to misspeak. There were a couple of seniors, but predominantly juniors, I believe in this.
I know it's required for the juniors, but I didn't know of any seniors. Because I know your art project essentially is a capstone.
Yes.
It wasn't.
It wasn't through the capstone structure, but it's essentially a capstone. Yes.
So really great. The second is that this is our first year through digital video production where our high school students are putting in entries to Fox Student News. And we received four nominations. I don't want to say the student names yet because I'm not sure if they've been informed.
Okay.
But Dr. Wendy Koo was informed that four of the video productions have been nominated for the Fox Student News Award. So some students are going to be attending those award ceremonies hopefully next week and we'll hear about that. But just being nominated is a really big deal.
Absolutely.
And then finally, our unified national basketball team, who was here with the Board last month, they had their torch run today. So the torch was lit with support of the Simsbury Fire Department and police. And they ran from Simsbury High School down to Jersey Mike's. Not just to get a sandwich, because Jersey Mike's was a huge supporter as an organization. Their month of giving, 100% of money earned went to Special Olympics. And Simsbury Special Olympics, I think, was one of the, the top performers within that franchise. So they ran to Jersey Mike's, they had a great celebration, and they leave on June 4 for their trip to Florida to compete in the national games. So very exciting news.
Very cool.
Lots of good news today.
Yes.
That's great. Mr. Curtis?
I'm all set.
Forgot about you.
That's quite all right.
Sorry about that. And I don't have anything either at this point. So.
Get to that Latimer Lane report.
We're, well, first, we're going to do some recommended actions. Don't jump my agenda, sir. So I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 10 meeting. Anybody? Anyone at all?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of May 10.
A second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain, Cindy. Personnel?
That's going to come to me this evening. For the Board's consideration, we have the resignation of two staff members. The first, Michaela Alcondro, who's in her first year as school psychologist at Tootin Hills. And the second, Kevin Snyder, math teacher at Simsbury High School. So there is a motion for your consideration in the exhibit.
Can I get somebody to make that motion, please?
Sure. I'll move that the Board of Education accept the resignations of Michaela Alcondro and Kevin Snyder effective June 30, 2022.
A second, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. The second motion for your consideration is the notice of intent to retire. Thank you. The second motion for your consideration is the notice of intent to retire math coach Lori Mattinson from Tootin Hills School. She's been an educator with us for 20 years, and she has given us her notice to retire in three years, June 30 of 2025. So again, a motion for your consideration within the exhibit.
Move that the Board of Education accept the notice of intent to retire of Lori Mattinson, effective June 30, 2025.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Approval of unaffiliated salary adjustments.
Okay, I'll take that. This is.
Yes, please.
Why skip my committee report? I'll take care of this. So the, the unaffiliated group is 30 to 40 individuals that just aren't associated with a bargaining group, a union or something else. But they're comprised of central office employees, some IT, some security, I think there might be some teachers in there. But for some reason or another, they're not part of the bargaining group. So we, we deal with them as a separate, as a separate group. And we have, we meet in the Personnel Negotiations Committee, we talk to the board, and we decide what the increase will be for, for that group for the year compared to, like I said, the bargaining groups will go through the contract negotiations, and that's where their increases will come from. So I have a motion, unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions on that?
Okay, I'll make a motion and I'll move that the salary range for the unaffiliated Board of Education employees and salaries for the central office administrators be increased by 2.5% for the 2022-2023 fiscal year.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well deserved, and thank you all very much. Approval of non-lapsing account expenditures.
Amy?
I'll take that one, Sue.
Is that why you were quiet the whole time?
Yes. I'm not last this evening, I'm very excited. So as previously reported during your last financial update, we are anticipating a loss by the end of this school year to the tune of about $500,000 to $600,000. In order to cover that loss, we are not allowed to have the budget be overspent without a supplemental appropriation. We do have the non-lapsing fund that is able to cover this loss at this point in time. So this is just a formality to engage the plan that I spoke to last time about how we anticipate covering this loss. So just as a quick reminder, we did implement a spending freeze that we're hoping to gain some savings from. And then we also received some news that we're gonna get some additional grant funding via the Open Choice Grant at the end, during the fiscal year '23 budget. So essentially, we are going to utilize the non-lapsing fund to offset our deficit and then reimburse ourselves in fiscal year '23 with that grant money. So this will allow us to replenish that funding within the non-lapsing fund and utilize that fund as outlined, as we discussed during the fiscal year '23 budget process. So this is just the formal action to make all of that happen. And then if you all approve this request, it will go to the Board of Finance at their meeting in June for the final approval.
Right, because if we use non-lapsing, Board of Finance has to agree.
In accordance with your policy, yes.
Okay. All right, any questions for Amy on this? Then could I please get a motion?
I'll, I'll, I'll move, it's, can you tell it, sir?
It's written there.
I'll move, effective May 24, 2022, to authorize the use of the Board of Education non-lapsing fund up to the amount of the fiscal year 2021-22 year-end deficit not to exceed $651,308.
A second, please?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Actually, can I ask a quick question? I probably should have asked this before the motion, but any, any preview into what the Board of Finance?
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
All right.
Keep it down, Mike.
Any, any thoughts or what the Board of Finance is gonna say to this? Are they okay with it?
I've chatted with the chair, and she's very open to the motion.
Great, thank you.
Is this the first time we've used a non-lapsing?
No.
No.
Several times.
I wasn't sure. I can't remember.
We've used it in the budget planning process before to offset operating costs. We haven't used it year-end to close.
The year.
The year.
Okay.
So.
Okay, all right.
I mean, folks out here might, a little background information. So, yeah, so.
Well, could, could we take the vote first?
You go right ahead.
Because I want to make sure we do the vote, and then we can have a little conversation. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Can, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Curtis, explain away.
So what I would say about the non-lapsing fund is, I think about 15 years ago, a law was passed that allowed boards of education to hold on to any reserve funding that they had, that they didn't expend in their operating budget that year, up to 1% of their overall operating budget. So our operating budget's 77 million. They since raised that to 2%. So it's been a really good kind of vehicle for us to put unexpended dollars into to adjust to things like unpredictable special education costs, or other unpredictable costs that come along. So we do have deficit spending this year, really a result of, we added three teachers over the summer prior to the start of the year, and we've seen some significant increases in transportation costs due to limited drivers and having to contract out for, you know, multiple different runs, sports runs, or some special education outplacement runs that normally Salters would have been able to cover for us. So it's a way for us to kind of close our own deficit, our own operating cost with dollars that we've put aside. It's like an emergency fund.
And if we didn't have the non-lapsing fund, we would have to go to the Board of Finance and ask them to give us.
For a supplemental appropriation.
A supplemental appropriation from the cash reserves.
Half million, that's what you're talking about.
But it's from our own.
It's our own dollars.
It's our own money.
You're carrying that over to the next fiscal year.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
You go.
Welcome. Okay, with all the votes concluded, we get to move on to the Latimer Lane School Report. Mr. Zadi?
Well, welcome to Latimer, everyone. So this is a similar presentation that you will see this evening that I have done in one way or another with PTO. It's also pulled from the same slide deck that I shared with staff back in January. And it, the intent is to kind of bring everybody up to speed with where we are in the process right now, and to let you know what the phasing process is gonna look like as we move ahead. So let me bring you up to speed what's been taking place, really, over the, this entire school year. If we backed up to September, tonight is actually the 39th meeting I have had about the Latimer Lane renovation project.
Just this year?
Just this year, since September. There is a list of them.
Because I was gonna say.
And I, and I look at it because it's amazing to me, the amount of work that goes into doing this well, and making sure that those who need to have a voice in certain aspects of it have a voice in certain aspects of it. And we have been really intentional throughout this process of including the people that needed to be included in each and every one of those decisions. So over the last two months, we have finalized the kitchen planning meetings, which has been absolutely an outstanding opportunity for Bethel Payne and for my CAF manager, Bonnie Anderson, to absolutely shine in ways that just have blown me away as they have talked about the specifics of what they need to make a kitchen function and flow. I throw out there what seemingly are stupid questions, and they give me back brilliant answers on why the flow and the function of the space has to be a certain way. And what we've arrived at are some really fantastic things that will give us increased flexibility in the scheduling of the building, just based on the way that the kitchen is set up. For those of you who don't know, we currently do seven lunch waves a day because of the size of our space. And by including those people in the process of laying out a kitchen plan, we are able to do, you know, staggered schedules or multiple grades at the same time. Just really making sure that we have the right people at the table to make those decisions has been great. We've also brought in our library media specialist, Kristen Brianti, and our Director of Instructional Technology, Maggie Seidel, to lay out what the media center will look like. You are sitting in a good chunk of the media center right now, and half of the gymnasium as well, as you will see in some of the plans that are gonna come. Those have been multiple meetings around what are the needs of what goes into a, you know, state-of-the-art library media center. Security and technology discussions with both Maggie and Mark Critts. Jason and Neil are at every single one of these meetings. Matt's often at all of these meetings as well. And then pulling in staff, some staff as well to help with the furnishings and finishes discussion, types of floors, colors of floors. We've gone to, I was at the new Anna Grace School the other day, looking at their gymnasium floor, to see what it was that we really wanted, because we get one shot to do this. I came across an article, an old article in the Current, that when this building was built, it cost $750,000. So well done, Simsbury taxpayers, in getting your money's worth. It's my hope, you know, 60 years from now, when someone looks back, they're like, wow, only $36 million. Well done.
Yeah, we should make a recording of this somewhere.
So those are just the meetings that took place on those standing Wednesday afternoons from, from 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock meetings. And those have been taking place for the last several months. We have cleared the hurdles of zoning Board of Approval. We have cleared the design review Board Approval. There have been frequent, frequent meetings with OSCGR, one of the many acronyms I have learned through this, which is the Office of School Construction Grant Reimbursement. They have been outstanding. They came out prior to the referendum ever happened to walk the building with us, and left that meeting with a, absolutely whatever you need, we'll help you make this happen. And they have been great partners throughout this.
And just to clarify, that's a state organization.
That is a state organization.
Not a local.
They are the one who gives us the stamp of, yes, we will give you your 20-whatever percent back at the end of this, if you do all right. And then the Public Building Committee meetings, which are sometimes once a month, often twice a month. And they are the group that, at the end of this, sort of oversees the actual construction piece of it, obviously with, with Neil and Jason and Andy and I present in those, those bi-weekly meetings as well. So that's behind the scenes, what comes, what is still to come. All right, so I should have edited this slide. The budget reconciliation project is, is up to date at this point. It was, you know, the, the perfect marriage of what the architect thinks it's gonna cost versus what the construction company thinks it's cost. Shockingly enough, those are not the same prices. When we went out to referendum, we budgeted what we believed to be a very aggressive 4% inflation rate, which at the time, we weren't anywhere near that. We are at about 12% right now. So that is why you don't see bulldozers outside right now. The, the team has done a phenomenal job of bringing those numbers back into a manageable amount, where we're looking at potentially a $1.3 million overrun. But what happened is, through the Board of Ed, through the Board of Finance, through the Board of Selectment, we've got everything that we need signed, so that on, on July 1, the finalized budget documents, the bid documents, will go to the state for their final approval, which we anticipate we will get pretty quickly. And then we will be out to bid shortly after that July 1 deadline. And then more meetings, and more meetings, and more meetings. And honestly, I, this has been such an exciting process, and I'm so excited for the two, two and whatever years ahead, until we, you know, are completed in this process. I want to thank, you know, thank the board for supporting this project, and I'm excited to show you some pictures of what we think it's gonna look like. And then breaking ground, which at this point, we anticipate will be in the, in the fall. I could pick, I could make up a date right now, but it wouldn't be any better than throwing darts at a board. But we do feel like we have got everything in place that we need to, in order to continue to move forward. So, when I did this presentation with staff, you're gonna see some big scary phasing things, and then you're gonna see a pretty picture of the building. Because it's really important to me that all of you, all of our kids, all of our staff, all of our parents, keep in mind that, yes, there is going to be some growing pains of living through an active construction site. But what we're gonna have at the end of this is a state-of-the-art building that will be the envy of the world. It's also gonna be some really cool opportunities for our kids. So a couple weeks back, before I even jump into this slide, a couple weeks back, they were out doing some core sample drilling. And so right outside a classroom window, there is a drill setup, and they are drilling down 16 feet under the ground, which is phenomenally disruptive to the school day, until your third grade teacher calls you and says, can you, can they bring that in? And so I went up to Mrs. O'Connor's room, because she asked me to come up, and I went outside, and I'm like, could you guys just bring it over and like, hold it up to the window? And he hands me the drill bit. He says, take it in. And so we, we brought it in, we opened it up. This is what it looks like 16 feet under your school. They explained the different layers of the dirt that was in there. So this is a piece that throughout this two years of what could be chaos, we're gonna look at and see as a really, really cool learning opportunity for our kids. So this is what you're gonna be looking at when we're done. The outlines here, this is the existing building. Goes to here, right there. I can do it. Oh, oh, look at this one. So right here is where your third grade wing ends. I know you're all familiar with the third grade.
You have four classes.
Yes.
Well done.
Well played.
So this is, again, this is, this is what the plan was when we put it out to, to the voters. These are, this is a, an image that you've all seen. This is where you are sitting right now, which is currently the cafeteria, which will be a library. I'm gonna jump ahead one and then come back. This is what it's gonna, likely what it's gonna look like if you were to fly over it. It's an absolutely stunning building. So if I come back to it, this, what we've done is create really a wraparound building. So you've got a courtyard here in the center, you've got a courtyard here in the center. So already, we've got, currently, we're dealing with some flow issues within the building. And I know I don't need to sell anybody on the project, but I want to let you know that we've thought, really truly worked to think of everything, so that you will have the ability to work through the entire building without everyone cramming through a center hallway. Your kindergarten wing is gonna remain where your kindergarten wing already is. You will have four kindergarten rooms, you'll have four first grade rooms next to them, you'll have four second grade rooms, you'll wrap around the corner the four third grade rooms, four fourth grade rooms, four fifth grade rooms, and four sixth grade rooms. So it really will have this beautiful flow throughout the entire piece. We are working, to go back to that furnishings and finishings piece, is there will be different sort of colors associated with each grade level as you pass through the building. So which will give a great visual marker for kids or for families who are navigating the building. It is gonna feel a little bit different as you move to each piece. We've worked hard to keep the core of the building. This is the library media center, this is the art room, this is the instructional music, the instrumental music room, and this is the general music room. All of those spaces are an absolutely mind-blowing improvement over the spaces that they are now. The, both the instrumental music and the art rooms do both open off into courtyards, which can be used for art shows, for musical performance spaces. The building is really, it's set up to have a phenomenal flow to it from start to finish. The gymnasium is a piece that has been a, a topic of conversation, because we want to make sure that the building that we are creating for everyone is truly a community use space. It is a poured rubber floor, but it's also a, a full-size middle school basketball court with, with risers as well in it, which will mean that this is a space that will get, can get used by the community on evenings and weekends. And so as a result, this entire section of the building here, bathrooms and gymnasium, has the ability to be able to, to be locked off from the rest of the school, which means that you can have evening and weekend functions and not have to worry about, like we do now, if we have a soccer group in here in the evening, students have potentially free run of the entire building. So those are some of those things that have come up in those conversations. For example, with, you know, with our security discussion is, you know, how can we control the traffic? If we wanted to have a function and just be in the cafeterias, you can block it off here so that you have access to bathrooms and cafeteria, or you have access to bathrooms and gymnasium. So it's a really, it's a really exciting, exciting building that we're gonna have. Now, how do we get from where we are now to this? So the piece I really want to talk with you tonight about is the phasing plan. When we initially started having these discussions, there were between seven and nine different phases of construction that were gonna take place, which meant, in theory, classrooms could have to move two, three, or possibly even four times during a school year. Tekton was amazing with us and supporting us and saying that that's not feasible to help a school function. So we are down to a three-phase plan. The first phase essentially lasts an entire year. So that means that after we get everyone into where they need to be situated at the summer, that is where they will stay for the course of the entire first phase. So I'm gonna talk about the very exciting library space that I know everyone is passionate about. This has been a piece of the phasing plan from the start. The library has always been intended, when this project is done, that it will be, one half of it will be a classroom, one half of it will be an intervention space. When it was built in 1963, it was built as two full-size classrooms. What they did was they removed that, that wall and turned it into a, into a library. So with that wall back in place, it is literally the same exact footprint as every current classroom in the building. So once that wall goes up, two classrooms will move into that. That will give us enough space in the building to be able to house all of the classes that we have with, with a little bit of stretch and growth room. Phase one involves everything to the north end of the building that's being built, everything to the south end of the building. So essentially, all of the new construction is in that first, that first year. Every, because it's a renovated. Every, because it's renovated new, every single inch of the building gets touched. Flooring gets touched, walls get touched, ceilings gets touched, air conditioning systems, plumbing, everything does. So, those three classrooms, although they are the newest quote-unquote of the vintage, they're the 1993 ones, they will get touched the same way that everything else does, which means that they will mirror all of the other, all of the other rooms as well. In addition to those three rooms getting touched, there's one, two, three, four, five, six more spaces that are added, which is really where we pick up a lot of the additional classroom spaces in the building, in that wing. It also completes that awkward dead end down at first grade and the third grade that everyone looks at and goes, why didn't you just, why didn't we just close that off? In order to make all of those things work, and this has been conversations with staff all along, there are going to be some growing pains of a construction site, which means that, one, we do begin to work on construction, there will be a good portion of time, several months of time at least, that the gymnasium does not function as a gymnasium, and will instead be turned into a, an instructional space for those receiving interventions. It's a piece that we have prepared for, it's a piece that we've talked with our intervention team about. It will also hold a smaller version of our library in there during that time to make sure that we can continue to give kids access to books. The stage has already become instructional space over the last couple of years, so that's not a new piece. But in order to make the same number of bodies fit into a building minus three classrooms in the third grade wing, that's one of the pieces that we've decided is the best use of space. Initially, we had talked about possibly turning the gymnasium into classrooms, but the amount of work to do that versus what it takes to just return the library to two classroom spaces, it's just, it wasn't, it wasn't a wise decision to do. This also allows us to keep our K to three together, and then our four to six together. So, that first phase is mightily substantial. It closes off, basically pushes us right up to the parking lot. It builds the double, the two cafeterias here, the kitchen here, the new receiving area, the new gymnasium, the stage, and some special education pieces up here, as well as the courtyard. It also builds this entire set of six classrooms in addition to the three that are being renovated, and that, the other courtyard as well. So, what you'll wind up is two courtyards after this, and two instructional outdoor spaces, which is a piece that COVID has taught us we should have been doing more of, and now we will have that option. So, this is where, when we, when we go through all of these, it feels a little stressful. So, we put a picture here of what it's going to look like to remind you of after all of this, there's something truly beautiful coming.
Did you have a prior job in sales?
I know, and all jokes aside, I do feel like I'm selling this, but I also want you to know that, like, the staff have been involved at every turn in what this is going to look like and how it's going to work. Again, the downsides of COVID, we also learned some really cool lessons. We learned how we can make a library function without a library that we can bring kids into. And we are two years into delivering books around the school. So, when we sat down with our Library and Media Specialist and our Director of Instructional Technology to say, like, how can we do this for two years, it was, you know, for the next two years of instruction, the answer was, it's easy, we've been doing it for two years. And yep, we'll have a great library when we're done, but we've come up with a really, really good plan on how to make this work for two years. So, the second phase, for those of you who are familiar with the building, is really the guts in the core of the building. So, it is the room we are in now, it is the gymnasium, it is the Art Room and the Special Education Room, and then it is the upper hallway where grades four, five, and six are currently situated. So, it really, it's going to pull from the front hallway, up this hallway, and down. In order to make this work, knowing that we have all of those new spaces back, will be up and running and online, and we'll have some space where the gymnasium stage is. The gymnasium stage, although it's technically a stage, is going to be set up as though it's a classroom with a collapsible wall. It's going to serve, it will serve as overflow of classroom instruction for art, music, or PE as needed. It will also have the ability to function as a stage, but we didn't want to give something just a one, you know, a one purpose if it didn't have to. So, again, Tecton has done a great job with giving us a facility that we think will work really well.
So, in phase two, we use the new classrooms from phase one?
Phase two, we rotate into the new classrooms. So, the exciting piece of this, and this is where I love scheduling and I love puzzles, when we looked at all of those, you know, seven or eight phases of construction, it was a lot of moving. There is a wonderful chart that I did not bring, because that's a level of in the weeds that we don't necessarily need. During these three phases, class, no classroom teacher will have to move more than twice. You will move once out of your room, and your second move will be into your permanent space. Unless you are one of the two very lucky fourth grade teachers who will move from their two, oh, who will move from these two rooms here to these two rooms here, and that will be their forever home. So, they will, two of those teachers will only have to move once. But if you look through phase two, so this is now 18 months into the project, no one in the primary wing has still had to move a single time. Fourth grade and third grade have moved back into their permanent homes at the end of that second piece. And so, which, it's really, although it's three mighty phases, it's far less disruptive than a lot of construction projects can be. And I was fortunate enough to meet our, who will be our construction supervisor the other day, when he was walking the building to get familiarized with it. And he was commenting on the fact that the phases and the flow of this feel, he's like, my number one goal is to remind everyone working on this project that this is a school first. And knowing we're down, we're down to three phases instead of seven, we're going to be able to function as a school throughout this. And as I said, yep, there's going to be some bumps and some bruises along the way. But it's a really exciting thing to be able to say, you're going to move once in year two of this project, and it's going to be over winter break, versus you're going to move Friday, and we'll have your classroom set up for you Monday. So, we've talked with them really about making, when those phases transition from one to the other, really aligning that with natural breaks in our schedule, having that first phase, do everything we can to wrap it up before the second school year starts. Having that phase two to phase three transition happen either over the winter break or over the February break, depending on where things go, so that we've got time for our, you know, for our guys to make those classroom moves that need to happen. It's another lovely picture to keep you focused on the positives. This is the cafeteria, this is this room here, for those of you over there, it's that room right there. What you will see is a lot of natural light, because that whole room is going to open up into an outdoor courtyard. It's a space that, yes, we will use for our potentially two lunch waves at a time, but it's also going to give us the opportunity to take classes outside to eat, it's going to give us the opportunity to do evening programs that also have the protection of an indoor courtyard as well, and then a straight shot down the main hall to the, to the main office. Phase three is essentially everything that's left. It's the entire front side of the building. So, it takes all of the full office suite, all of K1 and 2, down around the corner, it moves during that time, we would have to temporarily move the office into one of those two cafeterias in order to keep this down to a three-phase project. Some of those spaces are going to have to be creatively used. And so, again, this is the point where, now we're in, now we're into the final phase of the construction project, and now those kindergarten and first grade classes are going to have to move. The goal is to always try to keep them together as much as possible, so it's, I don't want to put like, you know, one first grade up here, one first grade there, or a second grade here, or a second grade there. We will work, we'll work hard to make sure that those groups are together, but again, to minimize the moves. You may be two doors down from a neighbor, but that's not the worst thing that could I do anticipate during some of this, although the library will be completed, for example, we would probably host some of our intervention in that space in order, again, in order to keep it down to three phases, there are some things that we need to think differently about. And the, again, the conversations I've had with Mrs. Brigenti are, like, if it's going to be two years of disruption, let's do it, two years of disruption, and then be done. If we did, if we go back to seven phases, it becomes three and a half years of disruption. I am, again, can't speak highly enough about my teachers and my teams, and that they have embraced the fact that we are going to keep life normal for our kids, that we are going to celebrate the construction process, that we are going to use it to learn things anew in different ways, and that we're going to be flexible, because things aren't going to go perfect throughout this project, but we will, we will be flexible in all things. You know, we've, again, over the last two years, we have learned to be flexible in a whole lot of different ways. This is at least a known flexible, and I think that makes it something that's easier for people to swallow, and knowing that at the end of this process, we are truly going to have a state-of-the-art building. Your last picture is from the parent drop-off sign, where we have upwards of 100 to, when it rains, 150 people dropped off. So, that flow will still largely be there. We will bring kids in similarly to how we do now. It's really been built with, you know, with the lens of how do we get kids to buses safely and efficiently? How do we get kids to and from the building safely and efficiently? And that is the, my recap of the Phasing Plan. What are the questions that you guys have for me about kind of how we arrived where we arrived, or any and all questions about the Latimer project?
No questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mike, that was great. And I really appreciate your leadership on this, the teachers and staff all buying in. And as I think I've told you before, we can walk down this hall, and I can show you my cubby from kindergarten.
Still there.
I can show you my first grade class, my secondary class. So, this is a deeply personal project to me, you know, in a very serious way. But long-winded way to get to my question of, so, it seems like you have a really great handle on this organization and how this is supposed to flow and roll out. What's keeping you up at night right now? Like, what's bothering you right now? If anything?
I, honestly, I just want to know when I'm going to see this trouble in the parking lot. I mean, that's literally the only piece. When we first heard the escalation estimates, that was a sleepless night, until I remembered that, like, there's a whole process of reconciliation that we went to, that we went through, rather, and the numbers were brought back into where they needed to be. Other than the paperwork hurdles of things and how, and construction delays, honestly, it doesn't keep me up at night.
Right.
Like, this is truly such a fantastic thing to be a part of. It's not a piece I ever imagined, when I started my administrative career, I would be able to do this. It's a lot of fun.
Good.
And it's great to see the level of excitement that the community has about it, that the Board of Finance has had about it when we were there the other night. We were at the Board of Selectment meeting the week before that. And to see truly the universal excitement across the town, you know, as the squadron, you know, wants next in line, and everybody wants next in line, to see the enthusiasm for taking care of our schools, that, you know, we have phenomenal teachers, we have phenomenal administrators, we have phenomenal kids, and we have phenomenal parents, and we've done a great job of keeping the buildings afloat for the last 75 years. And now, we're bringing the buildings up to match the quality of the work that's taking place inside, and it's really exciting.
Great.
Question. So, my daughter lived through the construction at Henry James a few years ago. Have you spoken much, or I'm sure you have, how much have you confided or spoken to Scott about this?
We have had some extensive meetings. My first question was, how do you keep everybody staying through the process? And so, that is why the amount of communication with staff was the first thing that Scott shared with me was, he's like, let people know what's going on. So, when we had the drilling out here the other day, there was a Monday morning email that said, hey, on Friday, they're coming to drill. And then Friday morning, there was an announcement of, hey, just a reminder that they're going to be outside doing some drilling. You know, making sure that kids get to see what it looks like and kids get to celebrate it, which is why I've started to post more and more pictures about it on the Twitter feed. You know, making sure that people have the information about what's coming up, about what's going on, where the process is. And then, he and I, he was part of the guide of why I was hoping to limit the number of phases, because he said, you know, that was one of the struggles at the middle school was, he had one of his, and I don't remember the discipline, but it was, it was like five different moves throughout the course of, of the process. But also, to keep the focus on, like, it's easier for me to move an intervention room four times during this process than it is to move a classroom of first graders four times throughout this process. So, those that are going to have to move, you know, to try to be selective about it. But yeah, he's been a fantastic resource for, quite honestly, for the eight years I've been here.
I'm just curious, so, when you say they started with seven phases, was that just taking everything in smaller chunks, creating more moves?
Yes.
So, you said, let's just blow it up?
Yeah, it was essentially...
Knock it off.
I think when we started, it was these three, they were going to do this piece. Like, the first phase was largely the same, was it was all of the new build. But then, it was like six classrooms here, and then six classrooms here, and then four classrooms here. And the problem is, you know, as we started to talk about it, like, they can do, they can turn over eight classrooms in the same time it takes to turn over four or two, because once they bring every, once they bring those crews on site to do the plumbing, you know, it's, it doesn't take any longer to do 10 rooms worth of plumbing than it does to do two. And as we were learning, once you get the people on site, keep them on site.
Otherwise, they might...
And it does. All of a sudden, it becomes a two and a half year, and then it becomes a three year, and so...
Yeah. So, Jason, I think maybe this is to you. We're waiting to go out to bid.
Yes.
So, once the bids come back, then we kind of get a realistic view of what our costs are?
Correct.
And then, we'll know if we have to go to referendum? I guess maybe both of you?
No, automatically have to go to referendum. Since the project originally went to referendum, any overage has to go back to referendum.
So, are we going back to referendum for the overage or a whole new amount?
The overage.
Okay. So, we're only going to be asking for an additional approval. Okay. That's important to know. But it would be important for you all to talk to your Latimer family, because we only had 1,056 people vote for the entire town referendum. So, you will all need to pay attention and actually come vote in our referendum when we have it, because it will be, it may be in off time.
We have one half of ours.
You want a school to paddle for, don't you?
I have a construction question. I'm not sure how to solve it. Can I ask Mike a construction question while we're on it, or is that...
Sure.
Go ahead.
I'm going to ask them to ask, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
First board, I mean, first time caller.
Welcome to the show.
So, what it's worth, I had the unfortunate luxury of renovating schools for many years, and your approach is awesome. It's absolutely the best way to do it.
Thank you.
So, not that you need my...
No, look, I appreciate that.
It's awesome. My only question, a couple of questions is, so, you did your soils, and soils came back okay, I guess?
Yep.
Great. Is there any asbestos baiting at the house?
Yes. Yes.
And while they're doing the segment instructions, are they encapsulating each area and providing the appropriate...
Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful.
Henry James was great at building those temporary walls and keeping the kids away and...
Yeah, I watched that, and they did a great job. It was wonderful. It's a tremendous amount of pressure. I learned quickly, find the tenured teachers' rooms, get them done, and then...
There you go. There you go. All right, anything else from anybody?
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. So, we are on to proposed textbooks for the 22-23 school year.
Great, that's me. So, each spring, the Board of Ed has the opportunity to review and adapt textbooks that will be used by students and teachers the following year. In your exhibit, you will see six texts. Some may be primary. We also bring forth supplementary texts to the board. There's certain descriptions there of these texts. I have five of the six of them in a hard copy. You won't be voting on these texts tonight. Teachers may bring texts for consideration. They go through a process of being vetted by department chairs, principals, myself. I've gotten into the process of also bringing these texts to curriculum committee. So, there are this text, The Sun is Also a Star, is a contemporary complement to Romeo and Juliet. There is a short story anthology that will be used as a supplemental text. You'll see the description there. The one that I don't have this evening is The Long Way Down, but I have it in PDF format. That's used as a supplement to Macbeth. And there is two texts, but it's really for one course, which is our American Sign Language course, which is a newer course at the high school, so that's an exciting opportunity. And finally, an AP Human Geography text. So, again, any board members can give my office a call and review these... So again, any board members can give my office a call and review these texts in greater detail. And what we will do is provide the opportunity for that review, and then we would put this item on our June 14, 2022 Agenda for Action, but no action to be taken this evening.
Do I have any apps or things that go along? I'm thinking of like the ASL that go along with that in the curriculum? Is that part of the adoption too, or only the textbook part?
Sometimes if there's additional teacher resource kits, and I think that that definition, quite frankly, is evolving with technology. This one actually uses a visual CD-ROM.
Okay.
Right? So I understand that technology piece, we've worked with Maggie there, but it's actually been effective because a big part of ASL is actually being able to visually see the signs occurring, slowing down, getting the muscle memory together with the actual vocabulary. So we also consider those technologies that are used.
So a quick question, on that AP course?
Yeah.
Isn't that, all AP classes use that course? It's like, we could say, we can't really say no if we want to have the class.
As far as the text?
The text, yeah, isn't that the same no matter what? Isn't all APs?
No, this is the AP Human Geography course that we spoke...
Oh, the brand-new one?
It's the brand-new one that we spoke about in curriculum.
I got it.
Yep. And that meets the College Board requirements of that curriculum.
I'm sorry, but that class, what is an AP class, taught other places besides here in Simsbury?
Oh, are you saying like the Connecticut college?
Is this course taught in other high schools?
Other high schools, like AP Lang is the same, no matter where you are. So this course would be the same thing. So this course, presumably that text was used everywhere that this course is taught.
I haven't checked that with 100% certainty. What I know is that this text corresponds with the College Board curriculum associated with AP Human Geo. But I can check that and ascertain whether this is the text that's used in other districts. But this is the one that's being recommended.
Coursework is standardized.
Correct.
Right. Is the course curriculum standardized? Yes, it is.
Yes. How we teach it can change.
But there might be some leeway as to which text you use to support the curriculum.
Potentially. I don't want to say with 100% certainty that every district who offers that course uses that text. I don't want to box myself in with doing that research.
We appreciate that, thank you. All right, anything else about textbooks? You two are just happy you don't have to take it next year. All right, Ms. Amy, I'm guessing, audit report?
This is my baby. So this is your annual summary of the most recently finalized audit, the fiscal year 2020, fiscal year 2021 audit. So you might recall, we previously had Bloom Shapiro as our auditors. They have been recently bought out by Clifton, Larson, and Allen. So your report is a little bit later than usual, as they had some staffing issues and transition issues, so they got us our report later in the year than what they typically do. But just a couple of highlights on the report. So if you go down to that first chart where it has the revenues, the expenditures, the final budget, the actual, so these are your financial statements on a budgetary basis, which is how you all are typically used to seeing it. What was our budget? What did we actually spend? And then that column all the way to the right, you have your variance, and you can see that our revenues as the town as a whole, including the Board of Education, we had excess revenues of 991,647. So the majority of this was attributable to the town-related building permits, as well as the conveyance and recording fees associated with the housing boom within the town, actually within the state. So that's the majority of your variance there. If you move down to the next section where it says excess of revenues over expenditures and it says GAAP basis, this is the GAAP basis of reporting where our bond rating agencies actually review this level of detail to see what our financial position is and if we are in a good financial position. If you go all the way down to the bottom where it says unassigned general fund balance of that $16,955,367, this is the area that we want to keep an eye on. So right now, we're about 17% of operating expenditures, and this is in accordance with our fund balance policy, where we want to be at 15 and a half percent to 17%, which is consistent with all other AAA bond-rated communities. So as long as we're in that realm, we're doing good. And we are within that realm. If you change the page to the next page, if you look at the management advisory letter for the Board of Education, there are two comments that have to be addressed within the audit. So these are the two remaining comments, then they're looking for us to adopt our accounting procedures manual. And this is something that is going to be updated as soon as MUNIS is fully implemented. So as you know, with COVID, we had some delays. The financial section of MUNIS is completely implemented. However, we are still in the final stages of implementing the payroll system within MUNIS. So that's expected to be done by the end of fiscal year '23, and then this audit comment will come off. And then the next one is the Fraud Risk Assessment, which they have been recommending for quite some time. And this is our next project right after the MUNIS conversion is complete. And it is included within fiscal year '24 of our six-year capital plan. So that is in the works to make sure that we get that going as soon as MUNIS is complete. That's all I have for highlights. If you have any questions?
Anyone? Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Policy radar.
That's back to me. I'm subbing in for Mr. Sullivan this evening. So our policy committee has met to review any policies that needed to be updated based upon state legislative requirements. So the one before you for first reading tonight is from the Personnel Series, Series 4000, specifically our policy on alcohol, tobacco, and...
Second reading.
I'm sorry, my apologies.
No worries.
Alcohol, tobacco, and drug-free workplace. So the major change in this policy addresses Connecticut's legalization of marijuana, but because marijuana is still prohibited under federal law, that use at work or outside of work, if it interferes with an employee's ability to do the job, is a violation of this policy. So that had to be updated. So there's a full copy of the recommended policy, and the policy would be brought forward for adoption at our next Board of Ed meeting on the 14th.
Okay, so anyone with questions can email Neil. If you have any questions about the policy. All right. With that, we are back to our second public audience. Oh, we didn't lose everybody.
I know, I was like, before I really started speaking, I feel bad that everybody left. I mean, I know they don't want to stay through the whole meeting, but from somebody who spent 16 years with a child in this building and started coming to Board of Ed meetings before my other little ones kept me too busy, my youngest was in kindergarten here, and I had been advocating way back then, if you look in the minutes, that this building start getting renovated. So while I have the utmost appreciation for the need for smaller class sizes, there is something to be said for perspective, and when you look at those pictures of what this building is going to be, I'm more than a little jealous. Lori Boyko, I live at 15 Oakhurst Road, and with tremendous appreciation for the many exceptional educators in this town, I'm going to talk about just one. I know her retirement is a couple of years down the road. It was announced tonight. But before, Lori Martinson was a math coach at Tooten Hills. She was a teacher here at Latimer Lane. And I want to take a moment to publicly thank her for the impact she has had on my now 24-year-old, along with countless other children in Simsbury. I'm going to start by expressing what is really a backhanded compliment. The summer before my son started fourth grade, a mother with older children in town advised me to go demand I have his teacher changed before school ever even started, warning me that it would be an awful year if he was in her class. Being a relatively new parent way back then at traversing this school thing, I was really concerned. But I don't tend to operate preemptively. I prefer to address issues if and when they arise. I recall muttering to myself that I was saving my chips for when I really needed them. 15 years later, I can unequivocally say that Lori Martinson was hands down the very best teacher my oldest son had in his entire education. She's probably not his favorite teacher, but she will be the one he remembers. She will be the one who had the greatest positive impact. And although she's not yet retired, I'm talking in past tense because this was our experience. She was tough. She had boundaries. She never gave one inch. She expected excellence, and she accepted no less. Every ounce of effort she pushed her students to have, she also gave herself. She modeled the work ethic and values she sought to instill. She believed in her students, and she championed them to believe in themselves. She set a super-high bar and challenged them to rise to exceed it, and they did. The very best teachers and coaches don't tell you what you want to hear and let you live in your comfort zone. They guide, encourage, and push you beyond your limits to encourage you to do and be more than you yourself ever dreamed you could. Lori Martinson did just that. She is the best of the best, and my son in Simsbury are so much better off for having her in our educational community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thanks, Lori. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight? All right.
He's finishing.
He was going out on a high note. I need a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
And a second, please?
Second.
Okay. With that, our public meeting is concluded, so thank you all for coming.